With roll call.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Lawler?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Alright, so we only have all seven. Looks like we need a motion for score sheet and summaries for the executive meeting of June 14th.
Make a motion.
We have a second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. There's no status sheet, no committee reports, so we'll go to the first item which is PC 11-21 LH-CV11 LLC.
So this is a request for a change in zoning from C8 to MXD Mixed Use Development District for a nearly 100 acre site on the west side of Tesson Ferry, east of Keller Road, on the north side of Britton Road. This is the MetLife site, so looking here, we're in South County in the sort of Sappington Concord area, west of Tesson Ferry, a fair way south of 270. So looking at the site, you can see the former MetLife office building to access to its one off Tesson Ferry Road. If you can see my cursor, and then sort of a spur that goes up to the signalized intersection with Butler Hill. The petitioner is making this request for four separate planning areas, each with a different use. So that's how they're proposing to mix the uses, so you can see them sort of color coded here. The first is Planning Area 1, which is two sort of commercial tracts along the Tesson Ferry frontage in red. Moving west, this sort of lighter tan is Planning Area 2, where they're proposing single family villas. Planning Area 3 is shown in orange, utilizing the MetLife office building for multiple family apartments. And then Planning Area 4 is the largest, the yellow area, which is proposed to be developed with single family detached structures. So the commercial uses proposed in Planning Area 1 are the C2 permitted uses, which are sort of general small businesses catering to the general public. And then they also requested professional and scientific laboratories and research facilities. These are some of the permitted uses in the C6 Office and Service, Office and Research Service District, which is along Tesson Ferry. So the staff does feel that this development does, you know, show a similar transition in land uses to the rest of Tesson Ferry Road. They've got the commercial along Tesson Ferry Highway 21, moving back, it sort of increases in intensity from the villas to the multiple family apartments, and then decreases back to single family detached residences where the site sort of abuts existing single family residential development. So now I'll go through each planning area with its proposal and then what the staff is recommending. So I'll start with the commercial planning areas. They total almost eight acres in size, and the petitioner indicated they would be developed with no more than 70,000 square feet of commercial area, no more than three stories in height, and they are showing a detention, a stormwater water quality basin in the southern portion of the site. The staff, you can see the structure and parking setbacks we've recommended. The purpose of these are to sort of push the buildings towards Tesson Ferry Road and the internal roadway, which is shown here between the two red tracts. We would like to push the buildings towards the sidewalks and the roads to create more of a pedestrian orientation with parking behind the buildings. We're also recommending a parking reduction of up to 20%. The MXD does allow for a parking reduction based on a study of up to 20%, so we are recommending utilizing that stipulation of the MXD. Staff feels that the range of commercial uses here are consistent with the land and zoning pattern along Tesson Ferry Road. So then moving west, directly west of these commercial areas is Planning Area 2. So you can see here currently it's parking, it's pretty much entirely paved. The petitioner is proposing to develop this site with 60, no more than 60 attached or detached villas. They haven't indicated whether it could be attached, it could be detached. The planning staff is of the opinion that this is reasonable. We've crafted the development regulations to make this part of the development comparable to the R6AA, which is what down here to the south southeast, the Tesson Gardens apartment complex is known as R6AA. So this would be a 4,500 square foot minimum lot size with a 20-foot front yard, 15-foot rear yard, and 5-foot side yard. As I mentioned, this sort of transitions from the commercial use towards the apartment, the multiple family apartment complex. Moving to the main existing portion of the site, Planning Area 3, which consists of the existing office building. The site, this tract itself is about 20 acres, and the petitioner indicated they would reutilize the office building for no more than 210 apartments. They would use the existing structure and the existing lake for stormwater management. They're also converting some of the lower level to underground parking. They do still have some visitor parking along the building here and along the main entrance. They are removing a lot of the surface parking and putting it underground for this use. The staff feels that this is a desirable reutilization of the suburban office park, and you know, we would note that this building is slightly historic. It was designed by HOK, and it's attractive, so we do feel that this is a proper reutilization of the structure. And then the final planning area, the largest, Planning Area 4, is almost 60 acres in size. The petitioner indicated it would be developed with no more than 110 single family detached residences. This part of the site also has about eight and a half acres in buffer area along the edge, along Keller Road here, and along the southwestern and southern boundaries of the tract. Department is recommending an average minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, which is the minimum lot size for the R3 district. We feel that this is complementary to the R2 Sunset Meadows subdivision to the south and the R1A smaller subdivisions here across Keller Road. We are not allowing, we've recommended, excuse me, recommended no access permitted via Keller Road. And we feel that these regulations for this planning area provide a transition from these existing residential subdivisions to the more intense parts of this proposal for you tonight. So here is the preliminary landscape plan. As I mentioned, there are some thick woodland buffers here, a 50-foot buffer along Keller Road, a 100-foot buffer along the southern and southwestern portions of the site, as well as a 10-foot buffer along this northeastern property line, and 20-foot along the Tesson Gardens apartment complex, apartment development. They've also shown the retention of a lot of the individual trees closest to the office building itself, the former office building, as well as significant proposed landscaping throughout this portion of the site and along the proposed boulevard and new roundabouts. The staff is recommending increasing these two smaller buffers to 20 feet and 30 feet respectively, just to maintain some of that wooded existing tree mass that exists on the site, just to continue to buffer those adjacent uses. For the villa development here, we are recommending one tree per lot. And then for the single family detached homes in Planning Area 4, we are recommending three trees per lot. I'd also note to the commission that there are a couple of streams on the site, and the zoning ordinance will require a 25-foot non-disturbed buffer from the top of the banks of those streams, as well as a 25-foot building setback from the non-disturbed buffer. You may recall at public hearing, there were some concerns and some conversation about the impact this development could have on some downstream stormwater management facilities. So we have added a condition in Attachment C for the petitioner to conduct a pre-construction survey of some of the abutting stormwater facilities to, you know, ensure that that impact doesn't... For purposes of clarification for this commission, if approved, this review process would be a little bit different than the C8s and M3s this commission normally sees. If approved, the MXD review would first consist of a concept plan, similar to what the petitioner's shown at public hearing, which would come before this commission for your review and approval. Subsequently, the section plans, which would be by Planning Area, would come to the department for the staff review and approval. And we are expecting the petitioner will probably submit the section plan for Planning Area 3, the apartments, probably in tandem with the concept plan. So just so this commission knows, you would be seeing the concept plan, but the section plans would be reviewed by the staff. Based on these considerations, we are recommending approval of this request. Staff feels that the MXD is the appropriate mechanism for this proposal. It facilitates the diverse range of proposed uses in a unified way, and it does maintain a similar land use intensity transition to the rest of Highway 21, Tesson Ferry Road. We are recommending architectural elevations be required for the commercial structures, including 35% real fenestration or windows, high-quality building materials, and decorative embellishments, which can include, you know, cornices or awnings. We're also recommending a cap on lighting standards at 16 feet in height. This is the maximum for residential uses, and staff feels it would be appropriate to have a standard lighting standard height throughout the development. In summary, we feel this is a desirable adaptive reutilization of this campus, and after a motion, I would be happy to answer any questions this commission asks.
Okay, we need a motion?
I move for that motion, Wayne.
Okay, Keith, do we have a second?
I second it, Bill Ballard.
Okay, discussion. Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Wait a minute, I didn't have my mute button off.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah. Just curious, Mel, on the first layout that you had, if we could pull that up. There is a street that comes into the second roundabout from what I would call the east or north, I guess. Where does that go to?
So this spur here?
Right.
Can you see where my cursor is? So this goes out to another signal at Butler Hill. I think it's called Butler Spur, this section right here.
Okay, so that ties the Butler Spur.
Correct, they have access here to the Butler Hill Spur.
Okay, so Butler Hill Spur, is that signaled lies on that side of the Tesson Ferry Road?
Right, so there's a signal at Tesson Ferry and Butler Hill on that side. And then there's another signal at the existing, the access off Tesson Ferry to the site as well.
Okay, good, okay, I was just checking that, okay, that's all I have.
Alright, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. And we'll go on to PC 12-21, Delinda Cooley.
I'm bringing before you PC 12-21, Delinda Cooley, as a letter of recommendation this evening. It's a request for a change in zoning from the C2 and R2 districts to the R2 district on a 2.12 acre site on the east side of Lee Make Ferry Road. We can see the context here, we're in South County just east of I-55, and the aerial shows that to the south and east is existing single family development, and then to the north of the site is commercial uses. This aerial kind of zoomed in, shows the existing conditions of the site. It's been unoccupied for several years. That zoning line sort of in the middle there, separating the C2 and the existing C2 and R2 zonings, was established in 1965. And that's really the impetus for the petitioner requesting the change in zoning. That split zoning has proven difficult for redevelopment. And they are proposing to continue the single family use. The survey that they provided, you can see the existing residential structures, that square building kind of towards the north of the site, just off the entrance drive. That will be developed as a greenhouse, and then they will, Mel, if you can go to the next line, I think it shows a little bit better context. The new residential structure will be built sort of in the center of that site, replacing to existing structures. And then the remaining structures will be redeveloped as storage areas. And they are also proposing to do landscape screening along the northern and eastern property lines. So the department is recommending approval, again, this is a letter of recommendation. Change in zoning to solely R2 is compatible with the surrounding development and zoning pattern. And the department believes that the continued use and redevelopment of a single family residential structure is appropriate. And so I'll ask for a motion for approval at this time.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
Elliott, second.
Discussion? Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go on to PC 14-21, First T Range.
Yes, PC 14-21, First T Range, is a request for a change of zoning from Flood Plain Non-Urban and Non-Urban to the C8 in Flood Plain. C8 Plan Commercial District on a 12-point acre site on the east side of Lee Make Ferry Road, south of Baumgartner, just north of the Merak River. You can see in the, for a county-wide context, you know, it's in far south county. And then the site's location proximate to the Merak River. The far southern, to the donkey of the site, is in the floodway, but that area, there's no development proposed there. There's also existing plans for an extension of the Merak Greenway, from Great Rivers Greenway, along the Merak River to the south of the site there. Yeah, and in further context, you can see the existing sort of golf range tee structure at the north of the site. It's currently operating under a conditional use permit, and then the rest of the site is just the range itself that you go south. So the preliminary site development plan, the petitioner is proposing to add a new restaurant and golf shop within the footprint of the existing roof structure, sort of since it was located on the northern end of the property. And then they're also proposing to expand the parking and the existing storage area in the northeast corner of the site. They are proposing to provide screening of the storage area, as well as the trash enclosure. And they are proposing a new sign located in the middle of the entrance to the site in the northwest. And then this kind of just shows the, on the left of the screen here is the rest of the site as it currently exists, with the driving range and then that donkey that extends down to the Merak River. And then we have a sort of preliminary architecture elevation, just kind of showing where the restaurant, golf shop facility will sit within the roof, the existing roof. So the department is recommending approval. The proposed C8 zoning is compatible with the surrounding development patterns. Additionally, the C8 Plan Commercial District Special Procedure allows site-specific regulations that can be used to preserve the recreational nature along the Merak River, south of the subject site. And it limits the permitted uses and other, commercial districts would have uses that wouldn't be appropriate for this site. And the proposed use is already existing in some extent with the golf driving range, and it's compatible with the surrounding uses and future recreational development along the Merak River. There are some specific conditions of development that we are recommending. Architectural elevations shall be provided, and it should be fenestration on the front facade of the restaurant structure. Fencing shall be decorative and site-proof, limiting to one freestanding monument sign. The trash enclosure shall be fenced and landscaped as well. And then additionally, a sidewalk along Lee Make Ferry Road to serve as future connection to any trails or recreational development to the south of the site along the river. And I would ask for a motion for approval at this time.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I make motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second a motion.
Okay, discussion, anyone?
Will we be able...
Go ahead, Bill.
Will we be able to slip the architectural elevations?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll be approved separately from this, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go on to PC 15-21, Chantel Nixon-Clark.
This afternoon, we have PC 15-21, Chantel Nixon-Clark, requesting an amended C8 on a 2.8 acre tract located at the northeast quadrant of North Highway 67 and Robbins Mill Road. Here, for context, you can see that the site is located in North St. Louis County. Looking at this larger aerial view of the site, you can see that it is currently part of an existing C8. To the north, we have single family residential uses. Directly across Robbins Mill Road is a St. Louis County Public Library branch, and across Highway 67 are more residential uses. So looking at the preliminary site plan, the proposed use for the site is a wine indoor/outdoor event center with a wine tasting room. The petitioner is proposing to use all of the existing structures on the site. The current single-family residence site is proposed to be used as the office. Where the sales office was for the landscape nursery, that is proposed to be the wine sales and tasting room. Down on the, kind of towards the south of the site, right, adjacent to the tasting and sales room, the two existing greenhouses are proposed to be two pavilions for seating. Then up towards the north of the site, the petitioner is proposing to rehab an existing greenhouse and use it as a wedding chapel. The petitioner will be reutilizing the existing sign that was currently used for the nursery, and she's also planning on retaining 100% of the trees on the site. The staff does recommend a few conditions for the site plan. We are recommending light standards to be at a 16-foot maximum, and that's just to protect the residential uses to the north. We also are recommending a site-proof fencing along that northern property line, again, in consideration of the residences, as well as a significant landscape buffer along that, the northern property lines. Staff is recommending approval. This site has been zoned and used commercially since 1979. We feel that the C8 commercial district procedure is appropriate. This allows for flexibility in creating site-specific conditions. The use of the site as an indoor/outdoor event space with wine tasting room is acceptable in the small commercial area that it's in. Again, we are recommending approval. The petitioner is proposing to reutilize the existing structures. Some site development conditions would be landscape buffers to screen the residents to the north, architectural review for all of the buildings, and we would limit the number of structures on the site to five. And I'd like to ask for a motion.
Okay, we need a motion for approval. Anyone?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, Lou, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm second.
Okay, Bill, discussion.
Yes, I have a question, are they buying that property or...
She is purchasing the property.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Bill again. What is the planned hours of operation for this new use of this land?
Her hours of operation, Sunday, she's proposing 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I believe the rest of the week, she's proposing 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay, and what were the hours of this was for the original business that was there?
I am unsure of the hours when it was a landscape nursery.
Just thinking.
Get those for you.
Proximity, yeah, yeah, the proximity of this to the residential. I think that would probably work, but just thought I'd ask the commission if there's any concern in that regard.
Anyone?
I don't think that it would be much of a concern. I think 8 o'clock is good, 9, 9 is okay. I think the later it gets, the more of a question it would be, but I think 8 and 9 would be fine.
Okay.
Very good.
Lou, thank you, anyone else?
It's, right now, it's a little high, so something's better than nothing.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go on to PC 16 and 17-21, McBride Barrel Land Company.
Okay, we have PC 16 and 17-21, McBride Barrel Land Company LLC, request a change in zoning from R1 and C8 to R2 and a PEU in the R2 on a 6.8 acre site on the north side of Lucy Avenue, west of State Highway 141. So the site is located in southwest St. Louis County, at the border between St. Louis County and the city of Valley Park. From the aerial, you can see that the site is situated within large lot, single-family residences. To the north, there's a small... To the north, there's a small commercial development. There's a with a gas station and a convenience store. Along Majestic Drive is also some small commercial. West of the site, you have some more single-family residences and far north of the site, we have Interstate forty-four. Again, this is just a little closer view of the site. You can see currently some of it's vacant and directly to the north, that that piece of land labeled nine four five, that is the proposed second half of the development that will be within the jurisdiction of the city of Valley Park. So looking at the preliminary site development plan, this is looking at the portion of the development that will be in unincorporated St. Louis County. They're proposing nineteen single-family detached residences on the site. All of the areas outlined in green, that is proposed common ground that will be throughout the development. The developer is proposing to retain thirty-three percent of the existing trees due to the unique topography of the site. All of this tree retainage and common ground will help shield the proposed residences from the more rural, large lot, single-family residences that about the site. The looking at the site plan, some of the internal streets, the to access the site, it will be via a roundabout off of Majestic Drive. Looking at the internal streets, we do see a street that comes to an end currently at a T-turnaround to provide connection to future development. This may, depending on the County Department of Transportation, this may need to be a permanent cul-de-sac that would also provide connection to any future development. We are recommending approval. The department feels that the R two fifteen thousand square foot residence district is appropriate for this site. It is compatible with the trending surrounding residential development in the immediate vicinity, and it is logical zoning for the emerging zoning pattern in the area. The appropriateness of the application of the PEU procedure, the lots are compatible to nearby areas. This procedure also allows for flexibility in site design, again, looking at the unique topography of this site. This allows for flexibility in lot sizes and gives the developer the opportunity to retain a lot of mature trees, which they are planning on preserving a large number of them. Some of our site-specific conditions would be that the monument sign shall be rustic in nature to keep with the more rural area where the development is situated. And with that, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. And we'll go to old business. We did do the PC twelve dash twenty-one, did we?
Correct, we did that. That was a letter of recommendation.
That wasn't a letter, okay. Okay, so we're done with that. We'll go to correspondence. And first one is PC twenty-one dash oh nine.
I'm bringing before you a request for an amendment to the conditional use permit number eight eight two via PC twenty-one dash oh nine Treatment Center Acquisition Company LLC. And you can see it from the the countywide context, it's in southwest county borders, Wildwood, the Sea Wildwood to the west. And you can see that it's pretty rural and secluded in nature from the aerial. So the the specific request, this is a refresher on PC twenty-one oh nine, it was the conditional use permit authorized a treatment facility for people with eating disorders. And they're requesting to amend the occupancy limits of each structure. Existing main building currently is limited to sixteen clients. And they're requesting an increase by four to for a total of twenty clients. And then the secondary building, which serves as a sort of transitional facility and currently the occupancy limit is eight, and they're requesting an increase of two for a total of ten clients. So it'd be thirty clients across the site between the two buildings. And the this, the petitioner cited a need for this increase from a high demand for the service they provide. They currently average fourteen clients on their waitlist at all times. And approximately thirty percent of those waited and never admit for treatment, in part due to that extended wait time. The site is in a secluded area, it's approximately thirty-nine acres. And there is no line of sight from adjoining properties. And they are expecting an increase in staff by three to four to help serve these these additional clients. And then the average interest stay for a client is thirty-five, forty days with minimum travel outside for pre-approved, like, medical appointments. The department is recommending approval of this amendment. And there is no construction or site improvements will be required. The existing parking is sufficient to accommodate the increase in staff. And there will be minimal impact on the neighbors. And the department feels that this provides a needed service within St. Louis County. So at this time, I request a motion for approval.
Hey, we need a motion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Discussion. It just used to be a a school or a mentally challenged kids.
I'm not aware of that previous use. It was when the conditional use permit was granted, if there was two existing residential structures. And I don't know if they were occupied as residences or if they had another use before that. This company does operate a second site elsewhere in in the county as well.
Yeah, somewhere in that same area, though, there was a a school for mentally challenged kids. And my second question, if they're gonna, people are gonna be housed here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, how can they say there's no construction if they're gonna cram two or three more people in?
They're stating that the existing structure is has sufficient space to accommodate increasing clients. If you'd like, we can request additional information from them about how that exactly would work and sort of demonstrate that that space is.
Yeah, because I'm assuming people would sleep in private areas instead of an open floor plan.
I don't know how the accommodations work, if they're private, single-family rooms, or if they have multiple clients to a room. I know primarily that they provide controlled meals, you know, therapy sessions, you know, things like that as as the. I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question. Could you, could you repeat that?
Hasn't this facility been there for over eight years?
Yes, it's been operating as the residential treatment facility for people with eating disorders since the conditional use permit was granted in two thousand and nine.
I have a question.
Yeah, Bill.
It's a eating disorder treatment center now. If they changed, would they have to come back to us?
Have they, have they, I'm sorry, I didn't press the last part of that.
If they changed, instead of being an eating disorder acquisition company, if they changed to some other disorder, they have to come back to the.
So the conditional use permit only permits treatment for individuals with eating disorders. If wanted to change the clientele that they were serving, they would need to come back before.
Hey, anyone else, anything? Seeing no one, we have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. Next item is PC forty-six dash nineteen Panera. This is a rather easy one.
Yes, we have RECUP nine sixty-seven, PC forty-six nineteen Panera. As you can see, it's located in south St. Louis County. Just for a refresher, the proposal was for a Panera restaurant with a drive-through. The request, we are recommending approval for the request for an extension of time for submittal of the site development plan for the fast food restaurant due to the unforeseen COVID-nineteen pandemic. It's made it difficult to keep projects moving forward. So we are recommending approval. At this time, I'd like to request a motion.
We have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. Last correspondence is TJ Muller Integrity Fitness, PC sixty-six dash eighty-one.
So our EPC sixty-six dash eighty-one, you can see the site is located in the Earth City Development in unincorporated St. Louis County. The request is to amend the uses of the C eight to allow for a gym. As you can see, this is the submitted site plan for the gym. This will be a gym primarily offering classes and personal training. It's a low intensity use. They're not proposing any heavy equipment. They're proposing some, you know, free weights, plyometric things. You can see on the site plan, they have a, an exercise room, some restroom and changing facilities, a few offices, and then the remainder of the space for training. The the space will be limited to about forty thousand square feet. And they're not proposing any changes to the outside of the building.
Okay, with that, we need a motion.
I so moved.
Do we have a second for approval?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. And we have, last item is a site plan.
I'm bringing before you a site plan for approval in the C eight plant commercial district. PT nineteen twenty in Eoff County. And you can see in the countywide context, last year, north county, north of Interstate two seventy. And the sort of aerial there, it's right at the intersection of Lusher and Redmond Road. And there is some residential to the to the south and east, but it's primarily commercial surrounding the site. And so just as a reminder, this is a food market without alcohol sales. I would note that they are not proposing any freestanding signs on the site, only wall signs on the the structure. And there are two entrances to the site. One on the north off of Redmond, and then one to the sort of southwest off of Lusher Road. And they are going to be providing screening around the traction closure closure. And landscaping is throughout the site, significantly along and the the southern and eastern property lines. And then also, there will be some landscaping along Lusher and Redmond Road as well. And then we have architectural elevation. You can see the the east elevation, which is the front of the the building, the entrance. And then the the west elevation, the rear of the building. And then it's clad mostly in in brick and aluminum. And then the the sort of second view here shows your south and north elevations, the sides of the building. And there's one more elevation, I just wanted to show you real quick, which is the the trash enclosure. And you can see the the locked gate in front of the enclosure, and it's screened by this masonry fencing. And at this time, I am requesting a motion for approval of the site plan.
Okay, do we have a motion? Elliot, please. Bill, we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Anyone?
I have a question. This is funny now. I didn't, throughout the the greenery here, I didn't see any lighting, any lighting at all.
So they're, they're gonna be using the existing lighting on the the site. They're not proposing any lighting on the building itself. And there is a, I don't know, there's a light pole right there where Mel's purser is, and then also right off of that curb. There off of Lusher, and then another one for the south of the building. And or that, well, that's the sampling manhole. The circles start to look the same. But that, it's the existing lighting that is on the 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 site currently, and it does meet the requirements of the the lighting ordinance. And there is no illumination extending past the property lines. And and they are, they did not propose any lighting on the the structure itself.
I think, I think there probably should be lighting on the building. I haven't seen any lighting on that parking lot in years. We know if it still works.
I don't know if it if it works as it is. They are proposing to use the existing standards. And I don't know what would be involved in, you know, bringing that up to to a working condition. But they're they're proposing to use the the existing standards, or at least where those standards currently exist, not moving them anywhere else.
Well, we can certainly add that to the to the site plan.
I think that would be a good idea to put lighting on the building itself.
On the building itself?
Yes.
What kind of landscaping are they proposing for that?
And I can pull up the the landscape plan that they have. Bear with me.
I'll make you the presenter, Paul, if you can share your screen.
Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, so they have a a good mixture of trees and shrubs. You can see along the southern property line here. And then also these sort of landscape islands within the parking lot. And then follows up the eastern property line, so around the building. And then this area here as well, and within the property, cutting the right of way is going to be landscaped as well. And it is significantly Missouri native plantings. I can answer any specific questions you have about the landscaping.
Mostly trees or something small?
So the plant schedule here, they have a mix of mostly these different, maple, it's predominantly maples, different varietals, a few different varietals of oak, and then one European hornbeam. Then they also have some flowering trees, and so those are more ornamental in nature, you know, red buds, dogwood, and a French tree, or a French trees and truck carries. And then the shrubs as well, they have nine bark, which is a nice flowering shrub, sumac, aridwood, juniper, all throughout the site. And they're, they are sort of blended, so it's not just clusters of one species. They are blended throughout the site. And then I also have the lighting plan, if Commissioner Cunningham would like to look at that as well.
Okay, one more question.
Yeah.
The liquor license. I see that they indicated they would not sell any liquor. If they decide to sell liquor, would they have to come back through, or can they just go ahead and get the liquor license themselves?
They would, they would have to come back before the plant commission to permit alcohol. Currently, alcohol is not, alcohol sales is not permitted yet.
Okay.
They would have to come back before the plant commission to do that.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else have something to add?
I would like to see the lighting schedule.
Do we have this existing light standard here, kind of centrally located, and then there's one here right off the entrance route? And then there's another standard up here, and you can see that the, all right, it's not letting me scroll very well, that the foot handle levels are showing that the illumination does not go past the property line outside of what is permitted in the lighting ordinance. And there is no proposed lighting on the structure itself.
Okay, so it's just lighting in the parking lot. That's fine, but I think it should be, there should be lighting in the building itself.
Okay, would you like us to go back to them and request they add that?
What I would say about that is that unless we wrote it into the C8 ordinance, we can't go back and enforce an ordinance requirement that doesn't already exist. You know, and what also, what I would let the commissioners know is that sometimes on these plans, the on-building lighting happens because it doesn't have the same effect that the, that the light standards have. So we typically look at a light standard, we're looking at the light, at the lighting plans, and if they have decorative sconces on the exterior of the structure or something of that nature, usually aren't shown on, on these. Although I do think that you will be seeing more and more, more and more recommendations from us that do include showing on Architectural Review decorative lighting sconces and things to improve the visual quality of development moving forward in the evenings. But without that condition, currently within the ordinance, the commission unfortunately cannot go back at this stage and require it. We usually, we bring these to you when they have met all of the requirements.
So you're saying that we will see some red drapes and lighting on the building?
Not on this one. I think in general, in the future, as we writing conditions, it's actually one of the conditions we've been interested in, you know, bringing to you all as part of Architectural Review. And I'm sure this commissioner has noticed that over time, our architectural recommendations have become more and more, we've been adding a lot more. So unfortunately, we didn't add those conditions to this one, but we are interested in moving forward as we move forward to have those types of lighting details on structures, you know, on architectural.
Thanks, Jacob.
Okay, anyone? We have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose. Eyes have it seven zero, and we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it seven zero, and we're adjourned till when, Mel?
So at this time, it's looking like we'll have a combo public hearing executive meeting on Monday, August 16th. Is that right, Jacob? We're not thinking about anything on the ninth this time. So August, a dual public hearing and executive meeting.
Okay, that'll work.
And what time would that start?
So that would probably be, since it'll be a combo, I'm imagining six, but we'll make sure that we notice that to you guys with plenty of time.
All right.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.